...Town Council Meeting of March 25th, 2019 to where? With a moment of silent meditation and sleep. Okay, tonight we have a hearing, I believe that's gonna be combined. There's two separate hearings before us tonight. That Mr. Craven will explain if he wants to try and approach us as a joint hearing, I guess. This is the way it was presented to our planning board. So without further ado, I want to open a hearing to consider an amendment to the Hopington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the amendment to the Hopington Zoning Ordinance filed by Atlantic Solar LLC, 260 West Exchange Street, Suite 102A, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903, and Gordon Excavating Inc., 15 Cold Spring Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02906. Donald G. Gordon, 11 Anderson Road, Concord Center, Connecticut, 06259. The landowner for property located at Zero Arcadia Road in Zero Lisa Lane, identified as platte 18 lots 8 and 13, an RFR 80 zone, and filed in accordance with Chapter 16 of the zoning ordinances of the town of Hopington as amended. This matter was continued from January 22nd, 2019 to March 25th, 2019, as was announced during the advertised and notice January 22nd, 2019 Town Council meeting. The applicants propose to install a ground-mounted photorotatic solar array on the property. The proposal to utilize the property will require approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment from low-density residential to commercial and a zoning map amendment from RFR 80 to commercial. Mr. Craven? Should I open the second one as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Then again, I want to open a hearing to consider amendments to the Hopington Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and amendment to the Hopington Zoning Ordinance filed by Atlantic Solar LLC, 260 West Exchange Street, 102A, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903, and Hopington Land One LLC, 260 West Exchange Street, Suite 102A, Providence, Rhode Island. The landowner for property located at 145 Skunk Hill Road, identified as platte 18 lot 14, an RFR 80 zone, and filed in accordance with Chapter 16 of the zoning ordinances, ordinances of the town of Hopington, as amended. This matter was continued from January 22nd, 2019 to March 25th, 2019, as was announced during the advertised and notice January 22nd, 2019 Town Council meeting. The applicants propose to install a ground-mounted photorotatic solar array on the property. The proposal to utilize the property will require approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment from low-density residential to commercial and a zoning map amendment from RFR 80 to commercial. Mr. Craven?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Robert Craven. I practice law in the state of Rhode Island. My offices are located at 7405 Post Road in the town of North Kingston, Rhode Island. Tonight, I'm here to present two matters to this council that have previously been discussed before your planning board with negative recommendations to the council. I wanna talk a little bit about the role of the planning board versus the town council in reference to a zone change or a planning, a plan change. The role statutorily is defined for the planning commission as advisory and advisory only. The ultimate power given to you by the Rhode Island General Assembly was that you, you alone, are the folks collectively that decide whether your comprehensive plan or your zoning ordinances change in any way should fall. You are not bound by any recommendations by the planning commission, nor do I suggest that you ignore them, but take them for what they were worth. The two proposals here today, as it relates to each property, and I'm gonna speak specifically about each property right now, are a comprehensive plan change and a zoning change that will allow for utility-style solar arrays built. Currently, verily, they are not permitted land use under your ordinances or under your comprehensive plan. However, I intend to go forward, as I suggested to the council president, as presenting these as one thing. It doesn't mean they don't differ in, for no other reason than they are two separate and distinct parcels of land, and therefore they require two separately distinct actions, in my opinion, from this council. But the commonality of witnesses, of reasons why and issues related to the change of use for these two parcels are close to identical. And the witnesses that I will present to you tonight will be talking about any differences that take place between, and this is how I refer them, as the Teft, the old Teft property and the Gordon property. Starting with that, by the way, the Teft property is no longer owned by a Teft. It's actually owned by my client, Energy Development Partners. They are now a neighbor of yours and taxpayer here in the town of Hopington. The Gordon property is under an option, and if this relief that we suggest is granted, the Gordon property will be owned by Energy Development Partners, and we will be a neighbor of yours and a taxpayer in both instances in the town of Hopington. The first request in reference to a change or an amendment in the comprehensive plan. And there is a specific section of your application that says, "Clearly state the grounds for which this amendment is sought." And the answer is, "The property is currently zoned RFR 80 residential. Solar energy systems are not permitted use in a residential zoning district." The applicant proposes to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map from RFR 80 to residential to commercial. The proposed change to commercial with, this is very important, "with a limitation to solar use only" "will prevent development on the site of other commercial uses. In order to utilize this property for solar development, approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment is required." And then the zoning change itself. Same question is asked on the application. State clearly what the grounds are. The property is currently zoned RFR 80 residential. Zoning energy systems are not permitted use in residential zoning districts. The applicant proposes to amend the zoning map from RFR 80 residential to commercial slash special, which means it would require special use for it. The proposed change to commercial special with the limitation to solar use only "to prevent development at the site for other commercial uses in order to utilize this property for solar development, approval of a proposed zoning ordinance amendment is required." So that's why we're here today. You folks collectively, as the town council of the town of Hopington, have the power to grant or not grant both requests for relief. With the understanding that this is for a solar use only, I will go forward and talk specifically about why I think, in my initial argument, opening statement so to speak, to the members of the council, why I think this is good for Hopington. I've had other hats in my life that I've worn, other than that as a lawyer. One of the hats I wear now is as an elected official from the town of North Kingston. I'm a state representative. I chaired the municipal government committee where ordinances are approved, the changes of ordinances are approved before the general assembly. Way back when, in 1994, I was, for two years I was a member of the North Kingston Town Council. I understand how difficult decisions like this are under these circumstances. There are two, two sides. Neighbors are saying, "This is bad for Hopington." And there are some other folks that are gonna present themselves today that are saying, "This is good for Hopington." And they both have separate and distinct reasons why. Doesn't mean one is right, doesn't mean one is wrong. But as I understand the history of Hopington, and I have not followed the history of Hopington's politics in any other way other than from my capacity as an assistant solicitor in the neighboring town of Charleston, specifically with reference to your school district, the regional school district known as Charrohold Regional School District. And I, I've seen firsthand the difficulties of the three towns, very different in nature, who are trying to wrestle with, "How do you educate kids and how do you pay for it?" That's a struggle that not only existed in my history or understanding of the relationship between your town and the other two members of your district, but that's gonna continue. Recently, last week, you heard that the governor has appointed or nominated, subject to confirmation by the Board of Higher Education, a new commission of education. I can speak for myself, I won't speak for you. I know that that's gonna come with a mandate to spend more money on education. And I know, as a legislator, that the likelihood is that that mandate for this and every other municipality will contain unfunded mandates. So you're in a position where you can't win. You can't control it in the sense that you're one of three members of the Charrohold Regional School District, and you can't control the fact that mandates are gonna be sent your way. I don't know what they are, I don't know how much they're going to be. But I know it's coming. So this is a problem that will exist in the town of Hopington for years to come. I also know, took note over the last several years, that this town has been striving in its desire to be a municipality that's rural in nature. It moved here for that reason. I heard the people in the planning commission hearing say, "We moved here to see trees, to see wildlife." I understand that. You fought the fights in Exit 1 and 2, that you did not want big-box commercial. I get that. I understand why. But you have an obligation to do one of two things. Either create a more vibrant, commercial or non-residential tax base or raise the taxes 3% or 4% every year. I think the latter is both politically and economically just uncalled for. Politicians cannot go back to the voters every year and say, "We're gonna raise the taxes another 3% or 4%." They also can't say that, "We're not going to raise taxes at all and we're going to defy the state, defy the state system." You have responsibilities. I believe solar offers you an opportunity as a town to maintain not only the residential and rural nature of Hopington, but I think it affords you an opportunity to not get rid of a farm, to not transform a farm from a farm to a residential property, which by the way, existing law, right now, says they have the absolute right to do it. Those farmers. What it does is it gives you an opportunity to do something else. Something that is, number one, not intrusive, if it is done right. It can be shielded, it has no environmental impact. Are there trees cut down? Yes, there are. Is it a permanent loss of trees? No. Why? Because it's not a permanent loss of farmland. These relationships, most of the time, are limited by the length of time that the technology that exists today exists into the future. I'll go back a few years to my days at the University of Rhode Island. I was not in engineering major, that's why I'm at the law school. But I always knew who the engineering majors were. They used to carry that holster on the side of it, and as I understood it, was a Texas Instrument Calculator that had more buttons that I would know what to do with, and I didn't even know what they did if I pushed them. That same calculator, which cost like $250, which is a real lot of money, up in 1974, when I started at URI, is now dwarfed by the capabilities of an app that's in my cellphone, that's on my head, just the button I need to press. Technology advanced. This technology is in its infancy. One of the reasons why the state of Rhode Island and other states and the federal government have given incentives to undertake these projects, tax credits as they're called, is because, and the most controversial one, is not on the land here. It's on, it's in the ocean, out by Park Island. Deep water wind. That was a hell of an argument from the general assembly before I got there. Why did we do it? If we were going to take 8 or 9 cent per kilowatt hour and turn it into maybe 25 cents per kilowatt hour for alternative green energy? Because we had to start somewhere. And Rhode Island delied up to the bar and said, "We are going to accept green energy as part of our future." I believe that this technology, solar, is part of our future. It's part of the future of your town. But the thing that solar does, that residential development by right, and remember, there is no possibility under this proposed ordinance that it can be anything other than solar. What it does is it landbanks that land for the duration of the efficiency of this type of technology, about 25 years. And it says, "In 25 years, we'll give you a bond," it says, "we'll take it down." And what is it then? Farmland. Is it gonna be used for farmland? Quite frankly, I don't expect to be alive that long, but if, I don't know what the future of farming is in the past. But it will be available, and it won't be a subdivision of residential nature which lasts, for our purposes, forever. With impervious surfaces, asphalt roads, asphalt driveways, and from an economic perspective, I'm not speaking in reference to desire and need or desirability of having children. It's kids in the school that you have to pay for, at whatever it is, 12,000 kids. So, the type of development, this type of development gives you, starting with approximately $120,000 a year in taxes, both for property taxes as well as what's called a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, that is calculated by the state of Rhode Island and is part of Rhode Island general laws. There will be no kids in the school system, no police, no fire, no roads. It will be screened from view. This proposed change would limit it to a maximum, maximum of 3% of the aggregate land mass that's appropriate in this town. So it would be appropriate and limited to 3%. We don't need that much, but we believe that other people will come here and potentially. You had one, Buckeye Brook. I don't know, I know that project was voted down, and I'm not sure that it was necessarily the best project, but there'll be other folks that will potentially come here. Now I've heard about the opposition. Opponents, I believe, of this project outnumber the opponents. I know that by virtue of a petition that we circulated that have asked people who are multi-generational owners of large tracts of land, and those that depend on those folks, who have said that they think that there should be some fairness to those that own land that allow them to do something other than permanently turn it into something that it isn't, which today it's a farm and it was residential, it would be just another subdivision. Those folks are paying approximately maybe 3% to 3.5% more taxes. A lot of people, that hurts. They're not necessarily the youngest people in your community. Probably average more on the older side. As I understand from some of the farmers that I've met during the course of my representation with these folks, this company, during the course of these hearings and this pursuit, this pursuit of this zone change and the comprehensive plan change, the next generation isn't as interested in being a farmer. Maybe others, and there are all kinds of uses that are, that never existed 10 years ago, from growing hops for microbrewery to growing hemp, to growing all kinds of things that are in smaller, traditional, untraditional ways as opposed to corn and tomatoes to be sowed at, to stop and chop or sow at the corner of, on a foot, on a foot stand. I believe that, that solar will stabilize your tax base for the future. There will be zero impact. There will be no expense, only pure, unadulterated income on the tax side, taxation side of your town's allegiance. With that, I'll be heading, I can answer any questions, but if you wouldn't mind, my preference would be to call my first witness. Sure. Councilman Hurst?
I believe you were in your line when I was at the college side.
Yes, I was.
Okay, this is the deal. I would like to see you rebut the observations of the Hopington Planning Board, specifically their, their three reasons why we should reject that. Can you define those three reasons?
Well, if you tell me what they are, I'd be happy, as you understand it.
Mr. Darien moved to advise the town council that the planning board finds the application to be inconsistent with the Hopington Comprehensive Plan and does not support the proposed zoning map plan and future treaty and use map amendment. This finding is based on the Comprehensive Plan goal. NR1, reserved, secure, protect a significant natural resource for Hopington as an endowment for the future of the town. Objective: NR1, protect and manage important forest resources and wetland systems to meet the demands of recreation, water supply, wildlife habitat, forest products, and a high-quality environment. Policy: PSF/15. Endorse future land development that is sustainable, energy-efficient, and in accordance with the town's Future Land Use Map. Ms. Holber, second to motion. The vote was unanimous. Mr. Darien, Ms. Holber, and Mr. Carletzer, and Mr. Lindahl voted in favor of the motion. Motion passed. Next, the Gordon one, and...
They're probably the same.
And I believe, the, I will just note that the second one is on the same three, in double G and double O, too. And that's the second one.
Well, I was there, and I did coordinate, so to speak, that presentation. Now, this is not, what I'm about to say is not part of that decision, but it's part of the record. At the conclusion of the decision made by the planning commission, in its recommendation, up or down, to you folks, the members, you remember, you probably remember that the chairperson recused himself. He had a financial relationship, doing some work for Energy Development Partners. So he recused himself. The vice-chair of the planning commission and several other members said, on the record, that they thought the presentation was excellent. And their reasons, maybe to, possibly to let, let someone down easy, or possibly it comes from their true feelings that if it weren't for the fact that the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan did not allow it, they thought it was a good idea.
I'd like to say one final, one final thing. The Rhode Island State Constitution, Act of 12, Section 1, says, "The general assembly shall promote education." And the fact that we do not have the dependable funding stream from the state government is one reason many smaller towns, including Hopington, have a hard time paying up education costs which have grown 75% for the town of Hopington. I think you and your colleagues should look at the cities and towns in the overall of promoting education because it impacts public taxes, it's already impacted families, and it affects a lot of stations, it affects children, and families that have to pay public taxes.
Okay, if there are no other questions from members of the council, if you don't mind, I'll call my first witness.
That's right.
Alan Benavides, he's a professional engineer, works for a company called Woodward Inc. Alan? Do you want to set up your board? I think it's not gonna work. Not gonna work? Okay.
Hi, my name is Alan Benavides. I'm from Woodward Inc., and it's an environmental and engineering consulting company. We're located in Providence, Rhode Island. The, the first question, I could set up a board. I don't think it would be that effective. I don't think anyone in the audience can see it. And I understand there isn't video capability. So what I'll do is describe the project, because again, I think it'd be fair to the people in the audience. I have the details of any questions, either from the board, or from the council, or the audience, I certainly can go over them. So I'll describe the project in more general terms.
So you said you had a PowerPoint?
No, I do have, I do have a PowerPoint, you know, but there's no projection capabilities. And again, if I put a board up, I'm not sure that people will be able to see it. But certainly can, if you'd like.
I'm thinking of it. It seems to me if you put the board up, at least they can check it later so people can see what we're discussing. Is it sitting at the front of the table, maybe, so people can see it? Can we put it at the front of the table or something, so people?
Down there, the better. See if it's, people can see.
Is that visible in the back? Can you see?
I've got a question for you. Do you have any, do you have any maps like that in the smaller version? I wonder if you had any with you.
I don't.
Okay.
So again, my name is Alan. Thank you. Alan Benavides. So what I'll do tonight is I'll give you an overview of the project. I'll talk about existing conditions. I'll talk about proposed conditions.
Would you mind explaining to the council members who you are and what your expertise is?
Absolutely. So, again, I'm a senior vice president. So, again, I'm a senior vice president from Woodward Inc., located in Providence, also a senior principal of the company, I've been practicing engineering for forty years, a professional engineer in a number of states, including Rhode Island, I'm licensed by professional in the state of Massachusetts, which is environmental cleanup contamination, I'm in super fun sites in the state, preparing solar, I've done approximately forty large-scale solar arrays, probably twenty plus, twenty to twenty-five in Rhode Island, served as a witness in a dozen communities, so I've been doing solar for a long time, and many of those projects, I've just, we've worked on most projects together since 2011, so I've done a lot of these, I've presented a hundred and fifty or more meetings like this. So again, what I'll do is, can I take a question? No, okay. So what I'll do is I'll go through existing conditions, very reform, I'll cover proposed conditions, and then what I'll do is talk about what I see as potential impact and address each one of those. There is the layout that you can see up on the board, and what that shows, and I'll be discussing tonight, kind of the theme of the presentation, is both projects as a single entity, with many of the, there's many common themes in terms of impact, it really is just a difference between, you know, the size of one versus the other. I do have a pointer, so I'll be able to point from here, but essentially, the theft property in the project is located, these are raised right here, and the board is located here with the roadway going out to Arcadia, and the access here is located, we're going to get to stuff below. So these are the projects shown on the morning drawing, you know, they're hard to see, but hopefully it should give you the sense, these are the panels that are located right there, right there, and right there. As part of developing existing conditions for the site, there was, topographic survey was done, as well as wetland delineation, property boundary survey, so what you see in these areas, these are delineated wetlands, these are some water areas, and you've got roadway here, and Arcadia over here, so that's kind of a general outline of what we've got here, and these were delineated by a wetland specialist. So, we've got a good understanding of what existing conditions are at the site, it's important to note, there's no floodplains located at the site, there's no known habitat and native species at the site, there's no historical, you know, historical archeological features at the site, so those are all kind of making up the existing conditions of the property. There's, you know, as part of the submittal that we made, and you have a detailed copy of the plans that were submitted as part of our application, it shows the topography that's located within these areas, so existing conditions was well defined as part of our development and concept layout. What we then did is took that and did the layout that you see on the board here tonight, and what that layout is, is really what's appropriate in the state, which is a concept layout. We laid out the panels in order to get a sense of where they're going to be, to give the board and the council an understanding of what's being proposed, but it really is a first step. This is, as you know, there's a number of steps in the process, hopefully we're able to take this project through those steps, and all the way along, there'll be significant difficulty that's occurring, that'll help drive this project, so this is a layout, it's a concept layout, but we certainly anticipate working with the community to implement changes if needed, in order to make it more into what the expectations for the project are. We have the two projects again, that project and that project, so that's the board and theft, and to touch on a few things, the buffering for the site is one, and Mr. Epps will be getting up in a little while, and getting into more detail of the buffering, but I've been out to the site a number of times, I've been out during full summer conditions, where there's extensive vegetation at the site, I've also been out during winter conditions, including about a week or so ago, so I've been out during all conditions. In general, this site has a really good existing natural screening vegetation around the property, significant portions of this property boundary are well screened with vegetation. I've walked the entire thing, it's a long area to walk through, but I've seen all of the boundaries, and I believe that the buffers that exist are strong. There's a few areas that, in the winter conditions, there's some areas in here where once the leaves fall from the trees, there are some areas where some of the homes are able to have a view for it through here, Mr. Epps will be talking in a few minutes about that, and there's also some areas in here. Based upon my site visits, those are really the only areas that we've seen, I'm going to touch on the southern part in a second, where there's visibility to the site. When I described that this is a proposed or concept layout, since we put this together back in October, the meeting continued several times since tonight, so the property owner has had conversations with the neighboring properties, and we're proposing changes, I'll talk about them now, and Mr. Epps will also talk about them, to deal with these two areas here and here, that we see as well as the roadway, the roadway is visible in the center. So what we're proposing is to augment what was submitted to the board, is an eight-to-12-foot buffer, I'm sorry, berm, located in this area here, and a berm located in here, if you can see this drawing better, and we certainly can provide this to the board, and you would see this in later submissions, is that, again, these areas, strong existing buffers, and here we would put, an eight-to-12-foot berm, would work with the existing topography, and on top of that, the trees, Mr. Epps has some pictures of ones that were done actually smaller, than what we're proposing here, that we believe will provide a significant, essentially make the site not visible from any of the neighboring properties, and what we're proposing as well is that same berm being put along the roadway. What we would propose as part of layout as well is, this was the concept layout, we've had some comments as well, about potentially having the roadway come in and turn and then angle down, so you wouldn't be able to look into the site, so that that way, the buffering will turn and you would just see the buffering, so make it not visible from the roadway. You know, one of the important things about projects like these is to establish a strong screening from adjacent properties. The property has good buffering, so I believe by augmenting what's there, so that in the wintertime, in this boundary here and this boundary here, is augmented with a very large berm of vegetation, in my opinion, this won't be visible from those properties. One other change that we'll propose that came in, and hopefully it's okay to discuss these, but it's just something that's involved as we move forward, is the kind of change we were talking about, is we also, as part of the sidewalk, we met with the owner, who owns the property down in this area, based upon that meeting, there was some concern about where the clearing was going and the location of the panels, so what we'd also be proposing is part of something, we certainly could make it what I'm describing tonight, conditions of an approval, is to pull the panels two hundred feet back in this area, so the clearing would be significantly, you know, further from this property boundary. Based upon the sidewalk and where we were standing, I believe that's going to be sufficient for the property owner, and we certainly could work with the property owner to move this here as well. There's a large outcrop here, which I believe might have screened it, but I think the property owner felt better that they do this push back in here. So, those are some changes that we've made as far as the existing concept layout is concerned, these are the kind of changes, as we walk through the permitting process, I'm confident that we can develop a site that won't really change the character of this area if you can't see it, if you have berms in place, if you can't see it from the roadway, you can't see it from the neighboring properties, again, I believe the site in general is, has great visibility screening from the properties. So, the screening is one thing I wanted to touch on, the next thing is the wetlands. You'll see that there's an area of wetlands located throughout the middle of the site, there's also wetlands located up in this area as well, and some down here. What we've been able to do, we've worked with RITM on projects like this, and this project we propose no wetlands disturbance, so we wouldn't go into those wetlands at all. What we would do is, there's historic roads, and we've just completed a site similar to this, well and similar to this, we've worked with RITM to use historic roadways that go through these areas, so essentially, back a number of years ago, people just drove, you know, working in wetland areas, aren't to be able to access their site, we would limit any areas that we're working in the site, to just those areas where there's currently historic roadways going through the wetlands, we wouldn't propose any others. As you know, the project needs to go through a very detailed riding review, we've been through it a number of times, I'm confident that what we've laid out here, and as we get to finals, detailed design, we would be able to work with RITM to develop a project that I believe would be permissible by the state of Rhode Island, no wetlands disturbance as far as we can see, is the proposed project. To talk about impacts, there's, once we're able to screen the site, it certainly, and again, as I stated, I'm talking about augmenting the screening of these areas, what we'll do is, in my opinion, first of all, make it not visible, but also, other things in terms of noise, this is a quiet site, as you develop properties, you really can't be quieter than a bunch of solar panels. So, it's generating no noise, there's inverters at a part of the project, they're located significantly away from the property boundaries, they're essentially the sound of a loud house fan, there's no real opportunity for those to be heard at the property boundaries, they also only work when the sun's out, so they're not running at night, you wouldn't hear those noises at night, so a very quiet project that we're proposing. There's no glare, we've had these discussions as part of prior projects, panels are designed to not reflect light, but to absorb light, they're very minimal, everything has some amount of flare or reflectivity, this is essentially the reflectivity these days of what sand can be, but regardless of the flare and the reflectivity, if you can't see the panels, you're not going to see any glare from the panels, so in my opinion, there won't be any impacts visually on the properties proposed for this project. There is no septic system, you know, if this were another kind of development, there's the potential for, you know, onsite wastewater disposal, project like this, there's no sanitary facilities, so we're not discharging any wastewater into the environment. If this were a residential property, it'd have potentially pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers being applied to lawns, none of that's proposed, is all part of all of our projects, we state that, we also suggest that the planning boards and commissions put that as a condition that none can ever be used, so we wouldn't use any of those as part of the project. There's no impervious surfaces, as the council presented earlier, one of the significant contributors to non-point source pollution in Rhode Island is pavement, if you look at all the drivers in terms of stormwater calculations and stormwater best management practices, it's the control runoff from impervious surfaces from pavement, we're proposing no pavement, we're proposing no impervious surface as part of this project. The site, from a visibility standpoint, again, is buffer, but what's being proposed, essentially twelve feet tall, there's nothing, and right now, we're working on finalizing things like panel layouts and those things, but essentially, twelve feet is the maximum, so many developments that I'm part of, there's a significantly higher height that's being proposed in part of the development, here, you've got a very low development, twelve feet, so it isn't something that's going to be towering over trees, and certainly will be something that we believe we can very easily screen from existing proposed vegetation. As we talked about earlier, there's no demand on resources, and you know, as the council stated, there certainly is tree clearing proposed as part of this project, all the projects, whenever I'm testifying as part of any project, most of those projects involve some land clearing, that's certainly proposed as part of the project, it is one of the components of this. At the end of the day, again, I've done many of these, and I believe that with the engineering controls we propose, this particular site, what's being proposed, that we can do this in a way that is able to accomplish the goals, as we stated earlier, but do it in a way where it's not going to be impactful to the community, it's not going to be impactful to the neighbors, and ultimately, as I've described, it's ultimately a good neighbor, it's quiet, and ultimately out of sight. So, with that, we can turn it to the board, or I'm sorry, to the council for questions.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions, please, that I could ask?
One, you said that you would not have pesticides, and my question is, how will you control the growth underneath the panels?
Sure. So, one of the things about the growth is, it's really, one of the key things for the solar panel owners, is to control that, because once the grass gets over the panel, when it shaved one panel, it shaved the entire sector, so it hasn't a real impact on the energy development. So what we propose is two things, after working with these projects and working with developers, we have a sort of a grass growth that we've got, that's both low grum, it tends to spread outward rather than going upward, and so we would propose using that grass growth, we certainly would work with the town, work with the town if there's something the town also had used or had an interest in, and then ultimately, it's cutting grass, so going in there, and it's either with mowers, or the areas are allowed between panels, under the panels, sometimes it's weed whackers, but they're highly incentivized to make sure that the grass doesn't cover any of the panels because it would...
Are you talking about acres?
Pardon?
You're talking about acres?
Correct.
So I, a weed whacker, using a weed whacker on acres is going to be kind of...
Between, so the rows...
...weight intensive.
I'm sorry.
Weight intensive.
Yeah, between, between the rows, so in the areas here, and then you can't see it from this drawing, but there's, you can get between the rows of the panels with the mower, so to be able to mow the areas, both going in this direction, which you can see the space in here, I know you can't see it, but there's space in going through here, so there's six feet, so there's a six foot width between where, where the top of one panel is, it's over in the angle, and then the bottom of the next one over here, and there's space in here, so the ability, so... I'm sorry, I'm off the mic. So the ability to be able to mow this with mowers is something they can do within those areas, sometimes, and by the way, I've had sites where they've done the entire site, not this large, with weed whackers, so I've seen it done for different reasons than this one, was that back in the day, they used to connect the rows with these bars that you weren't able to mow, but this, there shouldn't be any problem with mowing between the panels, between these areas here, and they would augment it with weed whackers, and the area would be...
How many trees will you cut down?
I can tell you the acres, but actually, if I could, there's an expert who's going to testify in a few minutes, he'll be able to cover exactly that question.
Okay, one more.
Sure.
About runoff. If you cut the trees down, you still stand the chance of increasing the runoff?
Yeah, you're a hundred percent correct. So, when you clear trees, what happens is you change the curve, so, and that's what we use to calculate that runoff, so the clearing of trees will end up having some increase in peak rate runoff, given that, so you're correct. Where we are right now is in the concept stage, the next step of this, when we get into this preliminary design, we start the permitting process, is what we would do is go through the process, and again, we've done this for every site we've ever done, is to calculate the pre-development rate of runoff for the two, ten, twenty, five, hundred year storm, then we look at the same thing for post-development. What this would mean would be some sort of, we generally try to use infiltration as the means of taking the post-development increase that we talked about and achieving the pre-development, so we first start with infiltration, which is consistent with RITM standards, if we can't do it with infiltration, then we'll put small type ponds as part of it, where we put the ponds located, like in this area here, potentially on the upwind side of where the wetlands are, so you would have the water coming in, being detained, again, preferably infiltrated, and then if necessary, detained, but one of the, RITM and the town would require that there be no increase in the rate runoff.
Okay, Barbara?
So my understanding is, this is both farmland and forested on the acreage, it is both open land, it is not all forested?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so in the farmland, the non-forested area, you aren't cutting down any trees, so therefore, I'm assuming that you really have much less erosion...
so therefore, I'm assuming that you really have much less erosion. Would that be the case?
When you say much less erosion, I'm not sure.
Well, erosion of water, having the water stand, are you going to be able to deal with robbing in an environmental way when you have just farmland? I mean, is there a real problem on farmland that you wouldn't have, or you do have, in the forest?
Actually, if I understand your question, I think it was more what the council gave us was suggesting. Typically, if you've got the, if you have the farmland and there's grass, we're going to restore it to a condition of grass, which is a significant part of the site. So in that area, there wouldn't be an increase in peak rate of runoff.
So my question then too is, what is the acreage of the farmland area? What is the acreage of the wetland area? And what is the acreage of the forest area?
Again, it's about, let me see what this...
No, go ahead.
Sure, okay. So the, let's see, we'll take one, I've had them individually in my project. So the Gordon property, this property right here, or where it's solar area, so the total area is 70.6 acres. The existing woodland area is 64.8 acres. We're proposing to clear, and again, we're not doing any work in the wetland areas, we're not doing any work in these areas in here. So you can see there's significant parts of the site that were not impacting. So the proposed cleared area is 21 acres, which is ultimately about 29% of the site.
So you're clearing 21 acres of the Gordon parcel?
And then your other question was...
Let me stay at the Gordon parcel for just a moment.
Did you want the wetlands removed?
Yes, I do. The wetlands, is that the wood section?
Well, that's one type of wetland. So there's two forms of wetland. There's the vegetated wetlands, and then there's the surface water wetlands. So that's what we've got in here, is essentially water as opposed to, these areas here are typically defined by the soils or the vegetation on hydrology, so one of the three. So we've got, you know, both in this area. So the total wetland area is 23 acres. With that being, there's two things. There's a wetland, and then there's a perimeter wetland, so 50 feet. And then there's areas that are essentially the river bank, which are these areas in here. So those are the three things that make it up, add up to the 23.8. So that's the Gordon part.
So that's the vegetation and the surface water, 23 total. And you're clearing 21 out of that 70.6 acre parcel?
Correct. Okay. And then the other parcel, it's 98 acres, is the total area. Existing wooded area, 67 acres.
What, can I say that again?
It's...
67 wooded acres?
So it's, existing wooded area is 68 acres approximately. What's being proposed to clear is 26 acres. So what that would be is 26.58% of the parcel. And the wetland areas, it's a total, and we've done this a little different because it's just the perimeter, there aren't the river banks. So the total is 30 acres of wetlands, and 15 of that is the actual wetland area itself, and about 14 acres, 14.35 is the 50 foot buffer zone. So, and just to go back to your initial question, the areas where there is, we're certainly not proposing any work with the wetland areas and the riverbank areas. In areas where there's already grass, essentially, it's, there's no change in the hydrologic conditions. In the areas that, you know, David suggested, those areas, there would be an increase in peak rate of runoff. Therefore, we have to devise engineering controls to contain those to be standard with there before the project started.
And that's like, and then a question that may be for you and it may be for someone else. Because there are substantial wetlands, and you're going to do obviously no disturbance of those wetlands and the perimeter area, is it possible to work with Rydon, or work with the land trust, or Rhode Island Fish and Wildlife, to use those areas for educational purposes, or lectures?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that your question or really is it someone else's?
Yeah, I mean, only the owner, probably the person that can answer that question the best, but I see him with two thumbs up, this is right there. So Mr. Epstein, that was the property owner, certainly of this property, could say that, he could talk about that?
So the land trust or the Rhode Island Fish and Wildlife can use that for lectures or educational, because it looks relatively substantial, and it seems to be connected?
Yeah. And it's, we have six meetings with Rydon to make sure that we're, and again, this is franchise with different sites, but understanding what we can do in order to be able to work around the wetlands. We're not proposing not only work within the wetland area, but also maintain those 50 foot buffer zones. And the key is, again, for us to be able to find and work with them to identify these historic areas where people have used them for decades to watch. So that'll be our approach. So there'll be no changes in the area of service as well, so maybe I'll try and Mr. Epstein could answer that question.
Okay, Scott, please.
You mentioned you don't want to interfere with wetlands. Now, the only maps that I've seen were separated out each, from the town ball. And the Gordon property, when I looked at that map, and there were two sets of things of interest to me, of course, the project itself, not the project, the land itself, where it is, and all the abutters were listed, and the road system. And then there was this other map that showed where the panels would go. But in that map, you can't see it in relation to the abutters. So I just wanted you to know what, that's the most I've seen. It looked like, when I looked at the map, it looked clear to me that on the Gordon property, the access road went over the wetlands. Could you talk about the access road?
Sure. So the roads that were used, the areas where it's crossing, there's areas where there's already historic crossings that are there. So it might be delineated as a wetland, but the areas that we actually put the crossings, so we go out there and observe it, and ultimately Rydon will confirm it, but based upon our experience of working with Rydon, is those historic roadways are the ones we're proposing to cross together. So there will be the need, you know, again, not only at Gordon, but also on the Tep Stump Hill property, is there the need to cross here? You can see that there are wetlands here as well, right in that area right there. But again, there's historic roadways that we would use to make that crossing, and similarly on the Gordon property as well. It's part of our application to Rydon. Typically, what happens is we'll stake out where the arrays are, we'll stake out where the wetlands are. We have the survey of certified, the site work affidavit, and then we do a site walk with Rydon and confirm those historic roadways. So that's, probably I answered your question, but that's how our crossings work, where those historic crossings go.
Okay. Is this just a path through the woods that was used by people going on the property? Is it just that?
Correct, yeah. It's just, people have used these for decades.
Is there a bridge or anything, or it's just land over the area?
Just land over the area. So what we do is we maintain roadways in those same locations.
Could you tell me, when did the Tep farm get sold to energy partners? Is that a recent event or years ago?
Can't answer that, sorry. I'm sure other witnesses can answer that.
So that could come up later?
Sure.
I can't say about support, about a year ago.
All right, thank you. I noticed there's a house on the property, I believe, on the Tep farm, along the driveway. What are you going to do about, is that being a subdivision? Will that get separated out?
No, that, yeah, it would be demolished.
It would be what?
I'm sorry, it would be demolished. So that...
Oh, houses, oh.
Yes, house would be taken down. So, you know, the house is probably located someplace in here. So where the panels are located, the house is within that footprint. So the house is really proposed at this point, the house would be demolished.
Okay. There are some other things that, I mean, I've got a long list of questions, and we may not be able to get through all things tonight, but I wondered about, and we haven't talked about the panels, of course, yet, the panels themselves. I don't expect you to answer at this moment, but what I would like to know, because this hearing isn't going to end tonight, it's going to go on, because people need to ask questions. The detail that I'm looking for, the panels, what type are they, specs, what's the wind speed before, or let's say hurricane comes, I mean, those are the sort of things that people are very interested in, what type of panels. And the plan for recycling, and we all know that, that's a tough answer. Europe's dealing with it, that we are recycling, they're looking at another way to do it. And I know a lot of panels, the old panels, that other countries, even this country, don't want, they don't want to do with them because they put in something that's more efficient, and they take the old panels and they've been selling them to the Middle East.
So to actually touch on both of those, regarding the panels, two things. One of them, when I started doing these, the panels were 230 blocks. They're now approaching 400, so panels are changing all the time. It's really tough. The permitting process, it can take months, a year, whatever period it is. There's substantial changes over that period of time. That said, I think that Mr. Epps, who is the landowner as well as from the development partners, can touch on the both, the panels, what's being envisioned, and give you a sense of how that might change over the process if we're going on. Hopefully, if you get a comfort feeling. What I can tell you is that these arrays are a substantial investment. The person, the owner of these is equally concerned of the things you're concerned about in terms of wind loads and hurricanes. They're designed for those hurricane force winds, but that's something we certainly can present as part of a subsequent testimony. And the second thing, Mr. Epps would also be the appropriate person to talk about recycling the panels. So it's a little outside the civil engineering realm, and I think he'd be the better of an expert to touch on that, but they're great questions.
And I just want to make sure that, other than just hearing about it, we want to see paperwork, we want to see documents, spell out everything.
Understood.
Okay. The other thing is, in reference to maps, I would really like to see a map that shows the project, but in relation to all the abutters on one map, in one separate map, because we have, the maps I looked at, there was a section here and a section there, and you know, we go over all of it. I want it all on one map.
So there's, there should be one key map that started off each of those arrays, and what it went to the individual ones. Because of the scale of the project, to be able to show it, we had to break them up. That said, this is, I put this together for the purposes of tonight's meeting, is this, so this is showing, if you can see it from where you're sitting, this is showing the abutting properties. We could put an orthophoto on here so you could see, again, you can, I don't know if this is wrong or not, but we certainly could provide that so that there were the properties. But is this the kind of map you're talking about with a little more detail?
Yes, yes. But I want to know those, I don't have to know the names, but I want to know these abutters, and what's important, that I'd like to know, not necessarily on the map, but to know in time. I want to know the distance from the edge of the solar panels to the property owner, not to their house, to their property owner. And I want to know who's closest and who isn't. But if you have, I know there's a lot of abutters, but we want to know exactly how far away they are, maybe 200 feet, 500 feet in some cases, or less. So that's important, if ever's in question.
Okay. So if I could just recap the response, is if you look at the very first drawing that we provide, it should show much of the information I think that you're asking for. Not an orthophoto, certainly if that were something we're interested, but if you look at the very first one, before you get to the detailed one, you should see something, you know, what you're talking about now. I understand what you're asking for, and what you're asking for in full, or what you're asking for isn't fully addressed, those distances that you're talking about. Mr. Epps is going to get up in a little while and talk a little more detail about that, so if he has some details on that, and certainly, if after his testimonies, there's something that was, you know, that you're looking for beyond that, we'd be happy to provide.
Okay. Another one was, there've been concerns about the transformer and the oil that is inside of it. And a previous proposal, they suggested, and I think the council was satisfied, that if that project went forward, they were going to put in cement basis, so that any event, something happened to a transformer, that oil would not reach into the site, and it would go into this basin.
Yeah, I think it's called secondary containment. That's typical of what these projects are. You know, Mr. Epps can talk about that as well. But the other thing, as far as the oil itself, and, you know, back, and, you know, to be honest, I don't remember however years ago, but I am an licensed site professional, so I deal with PCB contaminated sites. They don't use PCBs in transformers anymore. What they use in transformers is something called FR3, and it's essentially 99% vegetable oil. So it's made in order to be sort of non-harmful. You see transformers made essentially around the town, right? So those are something that's currently in use. Again, what we propose is called FR3 oil. And again, it's a little more on the solar side. So if any other, if there's any further questions, again, Mr. Epps is certainly dealing with those.
And other than that, a map could show us a little more detail, obviously. Where are the transformers? How are you going to work to make sure the water is clean? So we haven't seen any of that information. I don't know if that was provided to the planning board?
At this stage, at least it's our understanding, from a concept level, what, and certainly can work to provide what we're looking for, is that at the concept level, providing the details, and there are, if you look at all those detailed broken up drawings, you'll see some of the things that you're asking about there. I understand from a, well, from, you know, it's a little difficult to put them in the big picture. We can develop a plan like this that provides a little more detail, and make sure that those are clear around there, so it takes clear that they're more...
Okay, thank you.
Scott? Mr. Venn, I just have a couple of questions. Just trying, going back to the Gordon project, you had mentioned the total, I think, is 70.6 acres? And you said there was, wetland total was 23.8? And then you said the wooded section was 64.8? It doesn't add up. The math doesn't add up. If you have 70.6 and 23.8 is wet, it can't be 64.8, it would be, it would be like 46.
Well, the wetlands are wooded. Yeah. So most of the wetlands on the site, and again, I've walked just about every square foot of all of these properties, is these areas here are all...
Wet and wooded?
Wet and wooded, yeah. So it isn't like you might picture, I don't know what you might picture, typical or traditional wetland where it's just a big old...
Like a marsh?
Yeah, marsh area. So no, these are wooded wetlands. So it still needs a definition for hydrology, soil, and vegetation. So, and frankly, if you went out there and looked at the areas, you would say where there's a well. But anyway, so it's really based upon those criteria, so that's the reason that they're pointed in some areas.
And then as far as the number of panels, starting with the Tep project on the top, can you just mention, I don't know if that's your area of expertise, so, you know, mention, what's that?
I'm sorry, your question was how many panels?
Yeah, yeah. So starting with the top portion of the Tep project, top of the map.
Okay. As I said, is the, this is based on a panel wattage of 390. As we move forward, the size always, you know, essentially, technology moving forward, we're using a 390 watt as the target to come up with your answers, is a total of 49,140.
49,140 panels?
Panels, correct.
And that's that top section that's on there?
That's this section, and this...
Oh, that's combined?
Correct.
Can you separate them?
Well, no, and then I'll give you this one. So I don't, so this is, this is the Stump Hill proposal. So what I'm giving you is the total for one of the projects that you're considering to make. And then the other one is this one here, again, based on 390 watt panels, 22,140.
23. What's the output, the energy output for each one? Is that a one?
I'll give you that, and Mr. Epps will do that.
Thank you.
And by the way, this rough number that you gave me, right, is approximately 20 megawatts, 10 megawatts, of the two number. More or less, again, I'm a civil engineer, he's the solar, and the landowner, so I'll let him kind of address the question, but those approximate numbers and the numbers that I've given you, the last thing, again, it's based on 390 watts, that may or may not change, and the other is, as the project moves forward, again, I think we lost, I think we lost 3,000 watts down here, will we pull this back? So I would expect, as the project changes, these numbers to potentially kind of evolve as the permitting process, or at least as part of the regulatory process.
So what we're giving, megawatts, at the moment, if you took off that section?
Yeah, it's a proxy, and I'll let Mr. Epps, approximately 20 and approximately 10.
Twenty megawatts, 10 megawatts, so 30 megawatts total.
So approximately 20, approximately 10.
Okay, I'll set Mr. Venney's.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question, just about the dimensions of this, in follow-up to yours, what, how big are these things? I'll ask you.
How big are they, Mr. Venney's proposal?
I'll give Mr. Epps. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
I feel like Ed Sullivan laying out the next act. Mark Tremblay, Marcus Forrester, he has prepared two reports, and will prepare to testify to them. One is the forest assessment, what have we got there, what's it composed of, what's the size and its density, and then a restoration plan at the end of this, how and what would be done, once the plans are taken out. Thank you, Mark.
Good evening.
Hello.
You saw this way of the test, what are you about to give us?
Hi, David. Uh, Mark, let's see, Tremblay. I'm a forester, I've been a forester for about four years.
Mark, please speak in the mic, nice and clear, so, thank you.
Yes, I'm a forester, I've been a forester for about 40 years now, and licensed in Mass, certified in Connecticut, but I don't have a forester licensing program, but I am a licensed arborist, you know that. I've appeared here before this board prior to, there's a couple of new faces, I see, but I have appeared on a tour of other projects in the past, this past year. So as Tremblay mentioned, I did prepare a couple of reports for this project, one was the forest assessment, where I went through and did out an inventory to establish the cover types of the forested areas, sort of what trees were growing there, what their average sizes were, numbers of trees per acre, that sort of information that we foresters do on a regular basis, for any kind of management plan or that sort of thing. Kind of looking at the health conditions, the understory vegetation, a little bit about the wildlife habitat conditions, and what values there might be out there for that, and basically prepared a report that describes that, and that, if they happen, that position, which I assume will be submitted in the future. And basically what I found, there were three distinct areas, what we in forest management plans call forest stands, and there's a little pocket of mixed hardwoods.
Excuse me, Mr. Tremblay, can you get that pointer?
That's, I was just going to ask.
Just so we can all understand and follow what the heck he's saying. Mark, please.
So up in this area, right here, on the southern end of the field, before you get down the driveway to where the house is, there's a little patch of what we call mixed hardwoods, a lot of lit maple, some oak, a few fairly large trees, but it had been fairly recently thinned out, to where the number of trees per acre, I think averaged about 90 trees per acre. Oh, one word about when we determine trees per acre, we typically measure anything that's about four inches in diameter or above, those are measurable trees per acre. So they're not, oh, they're lots of small, about 90 per acre in that small patch there, that's only like three or so acres. The second largest area here is basically an upland oak stand, it's on high dry thin soils, a lot of scalded oak, and a very heavy understory of mountain laurel, very thick throughout. Fortunately, there were some trails that went through there, it made my life a little easier, but, so the overstory from there, at the average, of about 135 trees per acre. And then this bottom part here, which would be on the Gordon property, was dominated by white pine, a mix of white pine and a fair amount of oak in the upland holes, very gravelly, sandy soils, you know, these soils tend to be very droughty, and so can be affected by gypsumite defoliations, et cetera, which we all know, we've had quite a few in the last few years. So there's been some mortality in these stands due to the gypsumite defoliation, but not a huge amount, fortunately, not like in some other areas in the province. But this area down here being stocked with pine, there's a little bit more diversity here, so there's not as much, it kind of breaks it up. And along here on the southern strip, it's, you know, there's some rock ledges in here, and the stream valley, and so there's a break there where the pine, it's most, pretty much all pine down. And that area, average number of trees per acre of about 160 trees per acre. So in all, over the 40, 47 acres of forest land, to be clear, your question earlier, ma'am, was about how many trees total, the math works out to about 6,700 trees, most of those being smaller, four, six, eight, 10, 12-inch diameter trees. So I spoke about the health conditions, the understory, very heavy in mountain laurel up on these hills up in here, and a mix of pine, saplings, many of which have been stripped by gypsumite and had died, and also some patches of mountain laurel, blueberry, huckleberry, typical upland sites. The other, the other report that I prepared, basically was a reforestation plan. Now this applies to, sort of, so we looked at the before, and now we're going to look at the after, as part of the decommissioning plan, assuming that these panels are taken out 25, 30 years from now, how do we re-vegetate the site? So you've got some open agricultural land up on the top, you know, if there's some farming that's going to take place on that, those are good agricultural soils, then it should be farmed, but if, if not, then I've got a suite of species of trees to plant in those good agricultural soils, including black walnut, some meadow, and the pine tree, the conifer that would be appropriate, based on, based on site index values of that sort, would be something like lodge and/or even pine. In these upland soils that are on these two areas, you would have a mix of hickory and/or white oak, and/or some black oak, something that would hopefully be able to survive in those drier upland soils. All these efforts require some deer management to prevent them from being chewed up, and/or some other understory vegetation, like shrubs to be planted along with them, so there's a scenario that I've created that would be included in future submissions.
Okay, my question is, once you put those trees back in the water, it'll take them to get to be four inches to grow into what, in diameter?
Well, it'll vary depending on the soils and the slope conditions, but typically, it took at least 10 to 30 or 40 years to grow back.
It won't be the way for us, thank you.
Well, no, that would be impossible.
So my question is, if you're going to be replanting, especially in, I certainly want you to replant the open farmland, to be honest, I'd like to keep those agricultural soils pristine, but the center section, you said there was a great deal of mountain laurel and dandelion, so I'm assuming that it's actually an area insofar as suddenly can go down, so I would assume when you're replanting that, you would actually replant with the bushes like the mountain laurel, the dandelion, which would help protect the little trees as they grow?
Well, I'm not sure if the, I don't know if anybody willfully goes out and plants mountain laurel in their forests.
Willfully, it plants itself?
It will come in by itself, and/or it's, I mean, it's tough, it's tough stuff to go through, I mean, if you have a woodlot that's heavily inundated with mountain laurel, it's not something you really want. For wildlife habitat, in some aspects of that, it is good cover.
But blueberries, too.
Well, the blueberries don't grow very well with the mountain laurel, because the mountain laurel is so dominant, and doesn't let much else grow in there. What it does harbor are the mice that.
Good for owls.
Well, the owls can't get to them. So under, I think it's a mountain laurel, it's just like I think it's a Japanese barberry or invasive like that, it's native, mountain laurel's a native plant, but it can be early invasive, and so you'd have a condition where it doesn't let anything else grow, and it covers all the ground, the owls can't get to the mice, and the mice are, they harbor the lyme disease, basically. If you have a spike of lyme disease cases in an area, it's very likely because you have a high population of the white fennel mice.
So that would be very high.
Well, that's the current condition, yes.
So then, Scott?
Yes, you mentioned a total of 6,700 trees?
Yes.
Could you tell me how many trees in each project?
Based on the average per, for each project, normally separated by project, I do not run that comparison, I'm, you know, that's. In the Tappes Hill, one project, is how it's called, there's would be about 3,500 trees taken out of that project, and in the Gordon project, about 3,200.
Thank you.
Anything else, Scott, so then? So, yeah, Mr. Tremblay, how many, how many trees on the reforestation would you plant, I guess?
Well, I have in there, I believe it's 200 to 300 trees and shrubs per acre, to replace that average of anywhere from 90 to 160, because they're no-nos, and so they have to be reestablished, and, and native surrounding trees will, the wind will blow seed in from all around, even if you didn't plant trees out there, within 10 to 20 years, it would be fully stocked with trees. So that just basically hits a jump start, it gets the proper species for the soil types established.
So about 200 per acre, you said?
About 200 per acre, plus, plus some shrubs, the blueberry shrubs, huckleberry, some other native species. Depending on our conditions at the time, things are changing.
Enough of the better odds.
Frank?
Yes?
I wonder if what we've talked about, in your experience in looking over the property, you must have a written report, could you name that available, we'll make it part of the record?
Yes, well, I'll provide, each council member, the clerk, and solicitor, and the town manager will copy.
Can you make it part of the record?
We'll make it part of the record. I'll make it part of the record right now, and I'll submit it to you. There were a few numerical typos in it, that I discovered, and I didn't want to submit it handwritten, I'll have it to you before the end of this, this tomorrow. All right?
So, yeah, so it did 200 per acre, and it's about 46 acres by 90, 200 acres, is that what?
That would be about that, yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to do a little bit of housekeeping now. I, in reference to having made a motion, you accept, Mr. Tremblay's report, I have submitted a folder with two reports in it. Those reports are from Edward Pimentel. Mr. Pimentel has submitted a report as to consistency with your comprehensive plan, as a professional planner, for both a change to the comp plan, as well as a separate report or a second report, in reference to its consistency of the proposed motion before you, its consistency in the zone change of being consistent with your zoning and comprehensive plan scores.
These are in the black folders you gave me?
They are, both of them are. For purposes of housekeeping, I'll ask that you accept the copy I gave to you, Tom Clerk, as the official exhibit submitted by myself on behalf of the clients. Okay? So ordered?
What's that?
So ordered?
So ordered.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to read just the conclusion paragraph into the record.
Is he going to tell that?
He is standing on his report, he's not available tonight, Jimmy, if this hearing goes beyond tonight, which I expected will, Mr. Pimentel will be here the next time. It is Mr. Pimentel's professional opinion of this land use and consulting consultant, that the proposed zone change to both the comprehensive plan, as well as the zoning ordinance amendment, to realize introduction of solar development amongst the subject property and general Arcadia Road neighborhood, will be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the state energy plan. of the comprehensive plan and the state energy plan and therefore appropriate. It is my professional opinion, it's based upon the matter in which the proposed system can be well incorporated into the overall fabric of the surrounding neighborhoods. It's a non-intrusive land use that will literally be invisible while providing clean, efficient and less costly energy and realizing another much-needed revenue stream. That includes my housekeeping. And now I will turn the matter over to Frank Epps, Epps rather. Mr. Epps is a principal in this company. He's going to take you through many of the questions that you had proposed earlier, including the specifics of how this particular solar device works, or devices work, and how the issues of, that are most important to this town. Can you see it? And if so, what do you think it's going to look like? Mr. Epps, he has some photographs and then he has a series of documents that I'll hand out to you. Sorry, with you, Frank. All right. So that you can kind of walk along with us. As Sylvia, you had indicated you wanted some maps. This will be the photographs and a map that you'll be able to follow. So with that, I'll turn it over to Frank and I'll put on the stage and hand it to you folks. Thank you.
My name is Frank Epps. I am the chief executive officer, principal of Energy Development Partners. Energy Development Partners is a renewable energy developer. We are located in Providence Road Island. I am a resident of East Greenwich and have been a resident of East Greenwich for the last thirty years. I'm here today to speak with you not only as the developer of the solar, but also the representative of my company, who is the ownership, owner of the land, previously known as the Tef Land and hope, of course, to be the owner of what is now called the Gordon Land as well. And just a small background, Energy Development Partners, as I said, has been developing projects in the state of Rhode Island. We have approximately twenty projects that are either been constructed and operated or under construction or under development. In our history in developing projects, we have no violations. We have never been cited by RITM and we pride ourselves in trying to take a proactive view of solar development or the development of other projects, not only with the town, as a partner to the town, but also as a neighbor to our owners. And I hope that the information I'm able to give to you today will give you some comfort concerning the extraordinary means that we take to ensure that our projects are good neighbors. As to projects that we have abutting, residential problems, we have one project in Middletown that is within twenty feet of a residential road that has now been operating for the last forty years. We have a project that in Johnston Road Island that is abutting a residential property that's off of Peck Hill Road and that's about two hundred plus feet off of the road against the residential property. We also have some, we also have some projects in the Quonset Development Corporation. And I'm going to use this as an example of what we're trying to do with this project because our project in, at the Quonset Development Corporation abuts the bike path and the trail on Quonset and they were very, very, they were very, very sensitive to the idea of what we could do to make sure that we screen the project from view, from, from the, from the bike path and the sun. But what you have in front of you and what is available here for the members of the audience to look at is a, is a, is a map that talks about what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. And again, this is the green map that is in the front of your, of your folder. And this will orientate you with the, with the folder itself. In there you will find pictures of viewsapes and what we, and what we plan to do on, in various areas. Now, again, this is the actual viewsapes that are existing today. And there are also some examples of what we've done for bermes and other types of boppers, including on the projects themselves. Let's talk about the first thing. So the first, the first area is this area right here and that is, that is Skunk Hill Road. So our project itself is going to be approximately one hundred and seventy-five feet off of Skunk Hill Road. It will have a berm and if you would look at the back of your, fortunately if you just take a look at the back of your presentation, you will see examples of what the actual berm, what the berm looks like. I think it's the next-to-last part. And the berm is a, the berm and the pictures that you're seeing right now are approximately six to seven feet tall and they have trees planted on the top of it. We plan to have a berm of this nature, a berm of this nature on the, that's eight hundred plus feet of, of the frontage of Skunk Hill Road that would be, that would be approximately anywhere, first of all, it's going to be as high as it needs to be. As high as it needs to be to screen the panels from, from Skunk Hill Road. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a significant investment to the project itself, but it's a worthwhile investment if we're able to maintain the, the viewscape on, of, of the Skunk Hill Road itself, so you do not see the, so you do not see the panels. And so that is, that is going almost eight hundred feet from the entire, the entire section of Skunk Hill Road to the end. Now, to the east and the, of course, the first, that's, you can see the viewscape on Skunk Hill Road on your, on your first half. And so I've taken, I've taken, we've taken pictures and these were taken yesterday on, on the site and it's taken approximately eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning. And you can see a number of different viewsapes from Skunk Hill Road from the east to the west and onto the land itself to the south. And again, all these pictures, you have an example of these pictures. There's much more, many more pictures here that can, that can be viewed as well. So once again, a berm, maybe eight, maybe twelve or maybe even higher, if it needs to be, to be able to take the, and step back from a hundred seventy, a hundred seventy-five feet off, off the road to be able to make sure that no one can see the panels coming in and out, in and out or around Skunk Hill Road. While I'm on Skunk Hill Road, I also want to point out something very important. The, we have no intentions of doing any type of interconnection work off of the path of Skunk Hill Road. The interesting part of this, of this project is that because of the, of the cause of the wetlands, of existing wetland crossings here, we're able to, without, without any hesitation, be able to connect this facility to this facility with underground cables to connect the two projects. And this is something that we've just completed in West Greenwich, or I should say, we just completed the planning of it in West Greenwich and the approval from RITM. We're able to take and, and connect this parcel here to this parcel down on the Gordon property and we can do it by an underground boring that will go underneath the wetlands without disturbing the wetlands. And this is all approved by, by RITM. And we're able to connect this project to this project to this project. And the key, the reason why we're doing this is we're not going to have any type of utility poles or, or, or special poles coming all around the Skunk Hill area. There won't be any type of interconnection poles in that, coming down in, in the perimeter of the entire Skunk Hill, or the entire Skunk Hill property, or road, I should say. With the interconnection, this is a question that our councilperson Thomas, Thompson has asked, where's the interconnection? Well, the connection is right down here. It's down here and it's, and according to the map, as you will see, it is sixteen hundred feet from Arcadia Road to the point of where the interconnection is going to be. And we have no intentions whatsoever to be able to, to in any way, shape or form, cut any of the trees that are screening the back of, the back of the Gordon property to Arcadia Road. And if you would take a look at a tab on your, in, in your book, you will see the Arcadia Road viewscape. And that is the current viewscape that will, that will be maintained off of Arcadia Road. You will not be able to see in any way, shape or form the panels on the, on the bottom portion of the, of the Gordon property. I'll, I'll get back to this council property in a second because I just also want to make another statement about the Gordon property. The Gordon property consists of this area, all of this area right here. And currently, the owner of the Gordon property uses an access road to access his, his facility or his area, if you will, off of Lees Lane. That would be totally eliminated. There will, so, so clearly, and there's some, there's some violations that are happening up here that we're working with RITM right now. So our view of the world is that we have no intentions in any way, shape or form to, to have any increased traffic on, on Lees Lane because there won't be any traffic because there won't be any access to the property. We will, we're going to close that access. We are not in any way, shape or form touching any of the vegetation or the trees in this area as well. And so from this, from the southern area of Lees Lane going down to, going down to this property, you will not be able to see the facility itself. The facility over here is, is also not an issue, there we go, is also not an issue of viewscape. The one issue that we had, as, as Mr. Vennadius talked about, is the individual, is the individual that was right here. And in doing so, what we've done is we've cut, speaking with him, we've cut the, the panels all the way back. So we had at one point in time panels coming up all the way into the area of, I believe that's called Gobera. And so we decided that to, to meet this gentleman's requirement, we pulled back the panels. And again, it's about, as, as Alan had talked about, I don't know the exact number of panels out, but we've taken out about maybe two to three members worth of panels off of, off of that area itself. We've moved it back off of it to stop any issues concerning his viewscape. And also I want to talk about this area right here. There is an outcrop of ledge. And if you saw any of our other projects, you would know that we do not blast. We, if we have to, we will use a system that consists of big panels and concrete and we balance the system, we balance the system on areas of ledge. We don't believe there's any reason to, to, to do any blasting. It's too costly, it, it upsets, it upsets the geo, the, the land itself. I'm not a land expert per se, but it, it upsets the area and we have no issue, we have no intentions to ever blast. But clearly, other than this, this whole area will not be seen by, by anybody whatsoever. And so the key right now is that how do we minimize and mitigate any type of view from the, from the residents on Lees Lane and this area here, these are butters right here, to the facility itself? And I point you over to the, I believe this is the second tab in your, in your book and also here, which are pictures that, that show the viewscape looking east from the proposed solar site. As you will see, when you look at these pictures, again, these pictures were taken again yesterday between eight-thirty and nine o'clock in the morning. And we, I saw, and I took, I took these pictures myself. And we have no intentions in any way, shape or form to disrupt, disrupt the, of the current trees or anything of that nature, vegetation, all within the border itself. We will, from the tree line, this is very, very important, from the tree, outside tree line, we are going to be, the panels will be a hundred and twenty feet recessed from the tree line itself. That's approximately a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five feet off of the property line because the property line is right in the middle of the wetlands itself. So we have, again, we have to do that fifty-foot buffer off, off of this wetland. But we're doing a hundred and twenty feet off of the, off of the tree line. Now, you're going to ask me why I'm doing that. Well, the biggest reason I'm doing that is because I'm not cutting the trees down on the, on the eastern side. And since I'm not cutting the trees down, I have to be concerned about shading. So when the sun comes up in the morning, and this is the reason I wanted to be here in the morning, if you take a look at your, your, your tab that says shading setbacks, you're first going to see a picture of a, of a pole. And that picture, that picture of that pole is outside of Mr. Test's current home. That pole used to be, from what I understand, a pole that he had his satellite dish on. But it's perfectly placed, if you take a look at it. And if you take a look from that pole, it's a hundred, it's over a hundred and twenty feet off of the, off of the tree line. And they couldn't have any issues with trees because you know satellite, it needs clear around the site to the horizon. So that, that pole itself, if you look north, you will be, and, and the subsequent other pictures that you will see, you'll see shade, you'll see the actual shading that has happened. And so if I'm off a hundred and twenty feet off of that line, I am minimizing the shading on the panels that are, that are going to be, that are going to be placed in that area. And that's the reason I'm taking the hundred and twenty-foot setback off of the tree line from, from the, from the panels. Now, clearly, there are two main issues with, on the eastern border that we see that need, that need to have the same type of consideration for the Skunk Hill Road area or the, in front of Skunk Hill Road. And that's immediately right here to the, to the northeast going south. And then there's, there's an open area here that seems to be fairly well buffered through existing. But I have no problems in making, if need be, making sure that this area is, is, is handled in the same fashion. But we did see a requirement here and we saw a requirement down here to the south to continue our idea of that, of that berm. And to build up that berm in such a way that the, the butter, who is, there's a, there's a butter right about here and he has a deck and the last thing he's going to want to see, the last thing that I'm going to, that I would want to see are the panels. So I want to make sure I'm putting that berm up as well. And again, it's a, it's a very sizable piece of, it's a very sizable landscape. And putting trees on top of it, if need be, as well. My, my, my goal here is to do two things. Excuse me, I have three things, but I have one other question, I have one other aspect for you. When we, when we, we talked about the interconnection here, we talked about this, and this is, this is one main reason, by the way, we thought about acquiring the Gordon property. Because if we didn't, if we didn't do, acquire the Gordon property, we would be looking at putting poles all the way down Skunk Hill Road. So now we have, we have our interconnection here. The, and the, and the interconnection itself is going to be a pad. And yes, there are going to be inverters throughout the, the, the solar facilities, all three solar facilities. These, again, these inverters, as Alan had testified, are household fan noise. This, the transformer and the switch here, right here, is going to be using FR3. And Alan, the wonderful engineer for his own right, lists the actual percentage of vegetable oil to the, to the, to the attitude that, so it won't freeze, it's ninety-eight point one percentage of oil in, in FR3. And FR3 is a coolant in the, in the transformers that we use all the time. So there are other types of oils that can be used and, and, and there's absolutely right, there's no PVCs in it in any way, shape or form. But we take it, we take it, and if you take a look at any of our projects and find FR3, we smack that on, on the transformers. And we take this because normally we do own the land. And we take this because normally, we do own the land. The last thing we want to do is have any issues concerning environmental hazards. But this entire piece of property, right here, that goes out from Arcadia Road all the way to the back, as you can see from the viewscape, will remain as you see it today. However, I am going to take that trailer, that Mr. Gordon has in the back of the property, and get it out of there. We're going to clean up, we're going to clean up the property itself. There won't be any gates or anything of that nature seen. Now, because there's not a path, or I should say, an area here that we can, that has an existent crossing, and I said we're going to do direct from the orange underneath the, underneath the wetlands for our interconnection. We will have an entrance to this here, this project to the south, off of Arcadia Road. And that will be the entrance to that property. We also will have an entrance off of Skunk Hill Road into this property. But Mr. Teff, over the many, many years, has driven a lot of trucks and all that back here. So, we do have a wetland crossing right here that's established, that Ryan will prove that we have access to the back here. So, after construction, this will be this entrance, and this entrance down here will be your entrances for maintenance. You asked about the wind roads. The project itself has to meet the requirements of your, of your local ordinance and wind roads. And that's right now, a hundred and ten miles an hour sustained dust for ten minutes. We build our projects to a hundred and nineteen miles an hour minimum sustained dust for ten minutes. So, that's, that is a, that's a engineering side on the, on the structural analysis that we do with our projects. We've completed all our phase ones. So, we know that there's no environmental issues, other than some wetland violations up here that we're going to take care of. We have conducted all of our historical and heritage issues. We, through Cal, our consultant, we've seen no issues there. And clearly, what we're trying to do is invest in the right type of things that will ensure that the projects themselves are not seen. The last point that I'd like, the last point that I'd like to make is I was asked about the panels themselves and the size of the panels. So, the panels are approximately, not exactly, but they're approximately six feet by four feet, four feet by six feet. The panels are silicon, they're one hundred percent silicon. Alan was absolutely right, we're looking at three hundred and ninety watt panels at this particular point in time. And if we, and they're going to be stacked two, two up in portrait. And they're going to be at approximately a twenty, a twenty degree tilt. That's not, Alan said twelve feet. A twenty degree, a twenty degree tilt, the two panels itself, being approximately two and a half to three feet off of ground, so we do not have to worry about snow. You're going to, I can't touch it, but you're going to, I hear have a panel between seven and a half and eight and a half feet up, approximately. So, that's really going to be the maximum height of the panels themselves. The reason why we do two or three feet off ground, well, simply snow. And grass is one important aspect of the, for the filtration of the water itself. But also, pollinators are key. And so, we're right now in the process of doing a very large system down in North Kingston. And that's on two hundred and forty acres, and it's, it's an old, it's an old gravel site. But we're doing all pollinators there. So, I see a combination of low, of the low grass, the low grass that Mr. Benavides was talking about, low grass, along with different pollinators and so on. Now, we're doing this exact, we're doing this exact same thing in Portsmouth, for now, with the Chase family. And they run, they run a farm down there called Chase Farms. Mr. Samuel Chase and his wife Patricia are actually living on the farm. And they're going to continue with their wholesale flower business. And they're going to be raising bees. And I agree to do, to make sure that the air is around, around the panels, that, it's a six-megawatt system, so it's not, it's not insignificant with use, that have pollinators to help us bees. And it's not a big deal, because I think that's, I think the pollinators are a good way to promote the bees here in the area. And then, lastly, I was asked, let's see, there was one other question that was asked. Oh, the total megawatts, I got it. So, the total megawatts right now, if we use the, if we use the three hundred and ninety watt panels, is approximately eight and a half megawatts now on the Gordon property. And a combination of these two, of these two areas, approximately seventeen megawatts. And this is DC. So, now, if I, and it might be a little less because we've taken some panels out of here just within the last couple of days. But I don't, I see approximately a twenty, anywhere between a twenty-one to twenty-five megawatt DC system, approximately maybe twenty megawatts AC system itself. But I would ask that, I don't like talking about total megawatts at this particular point in time, because as Alan said, we can, we can, we have, we have a, we have an interconnection application for the projects right now that would take up the full twenty-five megawatts DC. But I, you know, I can, I can reduce panel counts and so on by using higher watt panels. And there's, yes, there are four hundred watt panels or four hundred and thirty-five watt panels today. And then, and Alan was absolutely correct. In my first project that I did at the Walton Christmas Street Farm in West Greenwich, which is all the way in the back, you can't see it in any way, shape, or form, we used two hundred and sixty and two hundred and eighty watt panels. So, for two megawatt system, I needed about almost, almost eleven, twelve hours. Here, here I could use higher watt panels and not, and not use as much power. And then, lastly, I'm in the, we're in the process right now of looking at other types of configurations that we could use in the solar facility itself. And by that, I simply mean, when we engineer a project, we can find a way to do the most useful project itself by conserving as much land as possible. All of these projects right here are oriented south. So, the panels, as Alan had talked about, are six to seven feet rows in between. And yes, we do mow them. And there is a mower that we, that is used to be able to go back and pull from the panels. Going underneath the panels, there's not, there's not a heck of a lot. It's, for some, the grass doesn't grow that much. And in our, I'm looking at different types of configurations. As I, as I talked to the planning board at one point in time, there's an east-west configuration that we could possibly look at to find a way to conserve even more land. But right now, we're doing the total southern one hundred and eighty degree orientation of the panels. My, my company, which I am a principal, a partner principal, a principal partner in, has made a significant investment into the Teff property. We plan to do the exact same thing on the Gordon property itself. Not just in the purchase of the property, but also in the project itself. To understand, our energy development partners is to understand one important thing. We are the developer. We will, we will be a part of making sure that every portion of everything that we have said to you today and early on to planning and zoning actually happens. I ask you to find references on me as to whether or not we have fulfilled this in the other communities that we've been a part of. But please understand that we're going to own this land. And that's, it's a very, very important part here. Because we're not going to own the solar facility. Now, you might have had other developers come in and say, we're going to do it, we're going to build it, we're going to own it. We're going to develop it, we're going to build it, along with the, along with our financiers. But having a solar facility or any type of energy facility takes significant resources for ongoing operation of the facility itself. And so, therefore, it's our, our business that, yes, we own the land, some land we lease, but some land we own. And then, we sell the project to a asset owner. Who's that asset owner? The asset owners of our projects are Con Edison, Constellation Energy is, as just been announced for our Brown University project. ABS has, which is a twenty-plus thousand person, excuse me, independent power producer. They are, they are going to be the project owner. Or they could be the project owner, but it will be a utility or it will be a very well-known independent power producer that has, most of them are multinational. Now, why do we do this? We do this because I'm not going to be around for five years to maintain the property, to maintain this solar facility and make sure it works. So, I want to make sure that I have an organization that's actually going to do that. I also want, as a landowner, I also want an organization that has the, that has the credit capability to be able to pay my lease in a single month. So, that's also very key to us, because this is a business for us. And we, and we are going to, you know, collecting rent for, hopefully, for the next twenty-five years. So, I want a good credit behind that. And you want the exact same thing. You want, you want somebody in back of this project that has the balance sheet to fulfill its requirements. And if you have now the developer as the owner of the property, you also have now, we're aligning our interests to be able to make sure that this project is operational, this project is maintained, and this project is, meets all the requirements and the responsibilities that it has to the town and to the butters themselves. And so, with that, I open to any questions that you may have about the background, about the project itself, or anything whatsoever.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Teff. Anyone want to start with Ms. Teff?
Um, I'm interested. Your inverters and transformers, how are you going to set those up? How many transformers, how many inverters per flat?
Okay, so, since we have, since we have two, two, I'm going to say, we have three systems, but I'm going to talk about segmenting them into two. These two here will have one set of transformers. And this project here will have its own transformer, all located in this area here. And why are we doing it? Well, we're doing it simply because the Rhode Island Meter Laws, which is Title 39, Section 26.4, allows us to build across, allows us to build up to a ten-megawatt AC system. And we can co-lead these systems on the same parcel. So, this is, this is two parcels, we don't really have to recollect it. But I'm going to have a simple point of interconnection down here. Or I should say, I'm going to have two common points of interconnection here and a single, a single interconnection down here. And remember, please, this entire line here is going to be underground, coming up to, it's coming up to a pole on Arcadia Road, and then going down to Bridge Street and over to Route Three. That's the, that's the interconnection path. So, it's going to be two meters with two transformers. And on the inverters themselves, the, since this is going, let's just say that this here is going to be a, I would like to surround it. Let's say this is going to be sixteen megawatts, if you will. And this is going to be, let's just say, eight. I'll be using nine, I'll be using two thousand, two thousand kilowatt inverters. So, here, if I do sixteen, I'm basically going to have eight inverters throughout this project here, and I'll have four inverters in this project.
So, you're using about twelve inverters, about two K?
About, about two thousand KW per converter AC, yes.
Two thousand KW AC. And you have twelve inverters, and you're only going to be using two transformers?
Yes, because, yes, because I can bring, I can bring the inverters down. And the electrical architecture itself says that I have the panels, and the panels are connected now to an converter. The converter itself takes the power from DC to AC. And then, I have to step up that voltage to the voltage that I'm interconnected, and that's a transformer. And then, after that transformer, I will have a meter. And that's the meter that will, that will measure that project. So, I'm going to have two separate, so I have twelve transformers, all merging down into, into, into one transformer, the switch here and so on, but into one transformer, one transformer going to a meter. So, to have a separate meter, I have to have a separate transformer of each, of two each meter. That's the way National Grid considers the information.
And it's all going to the lower?
Right down there, sixteen, sixteen, all that will be right down here, sixteen hundred feet off of Arcadia Road.
And there's nothing at the upper, the upper access?
The upper access is the current access that Mr. Teff has used all the years down to Yabba's Road.
And you won't have any of the transformers?
No, none. Everything, all the, there will be serviceable, excuse me, equipment in each individual area, because I put, that's where the inverters are. And so, I have to make sure of two things. One, that we have access to those inverters. Two, that the fire department has access to those inverters. That the fire department has access to be able to turn around their trucks in the, in the, in the plants themselves. And the fire, and in fact, since we're on it, the fire will have knock boxes and so on, able to get into each individual entrance to the, to the, to the solar facilities itself. But all of the, all of the interconnection equipment is right down there.
All right, and if anyone, or you should like to take a drive or walk that property? I'm very interested in what I see and where the homeowners are in that facility. I'd so love to be in touch with you and see if I can take a walk. And we would see where we have people in people's homes.
Absolutely, anytime to your convenience.
And you won't be arrested?
He owns it, yes.
Well, please, we, we, we own this property, we own the Teff property. We have a purchase option on the Gordon property as well.
And you're also moving the opportunity, as you're taking a look at this further, perhaps to move the panels a little further on the Gordon property from the water banks?
Well, actually, believe it or not, if you take, if you take a look at the map in front of your presentation now, we're all, we're already off of the water of the streams jurisdictionally by a hundred feet. And so, so the green areas in this, in this map, again, concept ones, the green area is, are the wetland areas. And so, therefore, jurisdictionally, we're off fifty feet. But I am now off more up here, I'm doing a hundred and twenty feet off of the tree line, simply because of shading. But the intimate extremes that come down this way and over this way, in the jurisdictionally, we have to be a hundred feet off of this.
So, it's a hundred feet off?
Yes, ma'am.
Any else, ma'am? Is anyone else? Still need to stop, Chad?
You said that you were going to be an owner, but you're going to be selling the project to an utility or an independent power producer?
Yes, ma'am.
But we still own the property?
Yes, we will.
So, who's going to leave primarily for the maintenance and the upkeep and the use of the electricity?
The, the, well, not the use of the electricity, but the...
Or the use of where they start to?
Another, yes, exactly. So, in other words, the key here is that I own a balance sheet in back of, the back of my projects that are going to long-term operate my systems, the systems that I develop and operate. And it's, and so, it's, you know, for, for me to, for me to say that I would do it or my company would do it, is, would be insincere, because it would not be true. And so, therefore, or, and I do know that other developers hold on to projects for a shorter time than full time. So, we immediately go in and we partner with a, with an entity, Councilman Davis Two, such as, as I said, Constellation Energy, who's partnered with us recently on the Tour of San Antonio. ABS, who owns about twenty-some odd megawatts of our projects, so we're doing it now. We partner with them and...
Do they double-tail or national grid, so they handle lots of those issues?
Well, we, we, of course, handle all of the contractual arrangements with National Grids, the designs and so on. So, we form an entity that owns the project. We have an entity that... So we form an entity that owns the project, we have an entity that owns the land, there's a lease agreement between the entity that owns the project and us, the owners of the land. And then we take that entity that owns the project and we sell that entity to, to a utility or a power producer.
I think the direction I'm trying to go is that if there's a problem, whether it's fire or issues, who takes care of it?
The owner of the project does.
Which is?
Which would be, which would be Constellation, of course.
Which would be Hana, or someone who understands the digital system problems of electricity?
And has the resources to do it.
To solve.
And so, and so therefore, there's a, we want to make sure that we have an entity that has the capability of bonding. We want to make sure this entity has capability of insurance, and it'll take out business interruption insurance and other types of insurance on it as well. And we want an entity that's going to, to agree to the main, ongoing upkeep, maintenance of the project itself. And clearly, an entity of this nature has to have desire to do so.
And you're still very much involved with that?
Absolutely. I mean, I want to make sure that these people are doing the right thing on my land.
Yeah, you had mentioned earlier that, when you talked about the sustained wind, I believe you said, you talked about a hundred and ten, but didn't you say that the panels that you'll be putting in can withstand a hundred and nineteen sustained wind?
Right, so basically, when we put in our building permit to the town, we provide not only the site layouts and everything that's been approved, you know, for the last two years, from the zoning and planning department, but we'll also provide the town with a full electrical plan. And that's a structural plan. And that structural plan is going to be certified by a professional engineer to meet the requirements that I stated. Now, again, most towns have a hundred and ten mile an hour sustained us for ten minutes. We, we build our systems to a hundred and nineteen miles an hour sustained us for ten minutes, just as, just as a standard. And we do so, not unlike we do, by using FR3 for our, for the loads and our transformers, plus more. But then again, we're not using very, we're not using flimsy equipment that, you know, we're racking and so on, we're using very substantial equipment that can, that can maintain the project itself.
Thank you. And I have another question. And so you also then work, basically, again, you work with the fire and the other companies to make sure they have both the equipment and the training for anything that should happen at the project?
It's actually, interestingly, you said that because I'm in the process right now, as soon as our Chase Farm project is completed, I have an obligation to the town of Portsmouth to do fire training for the project itself. Now, clearly, every single project has to meet certain safety standards, and it also has to have information on the site, like with placards, to show where the disconnects are, where certain, where certain equipment is maintained or is located throughout the park itself. And all that has to be put in as a, as a part of the fire safety standards, and also, by the way, it's, it's national electric, under the national electric codes, N E C codes. So all that information is there. However, when we do the training, the fire training for Portsmouth, we plan to have our people, our projects in, North Smithfield, West Greenwich, North Kingstown, Wausau, which is all set up North Kingstown, our project in Richmond, our project in Portsmouth, our project in Middletown, and we're opening it all, we're opening up that type of training directly to all the fire chiefs and the fire marshals in the various communities.
Okay, so the other issues, the ambulance companies, because something electrical is often burned rather than cut. And I was hoping that they also be working with the ambulance companies to make sure they're trained for anything that's traumatic that would have to do with electricity, which often has to do with burn and the electrical response to the burns?
Sure. And, and, and the answer is sure, yes.
Especially since we have volunteer interns in fire departments, to make sure that all of the mostly, suppose that work on both the Bell and National are trained, so they know exactly what to do in a situation that would be unusual for them. It's not a house fire, it's electric, and it might be larger than that, understand the law.
Since I'm not involved in, as an expert in training of that entry, I would talk, I would talk to the groups that we are, that we are hired to see if it can be incorporated, and I'm sure it can, to be able to do something with this. You know, the type of training, you know, the whole infrastructure of electricity is changing drastically in the United States. It's not just in renewables, but it's going down to local distribution, uh, local distributed generation, which this is. Getting away from very large power plants is no great new point, just was demolished the other day, there's a nuclear, uh, the nuclear power plant, both Pilgrim and so on, are closing. There are some, there are some other things. This, this is, this is the infrastructure that we're going to be seeing throughout the United States, the distributed generation, or, or energy produced in the region that is, is used. And as a good, not only a good neighbor, but I think it's good business practices for us to be able to make sure that we train the support staffs in the communities that we're, with our systems that we're supporting. So yes, we will be very happy to include any type of safety training. Yes, ma'am.
One final question about the underground connection?
Yes, ma'am.
And have the D E N or the government have cleared that community?
Well, we have to...
Disturbance of the wetlands?
Well, yes, first off, the RIDE, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, allows for directional boring underneath the wetlands, and we are doing the exact same thing in our West Greenwich project. We have two, we have two phases in our West Greenwich project, and that project is being built for the University of Rhode Island. So we have a phase on the top, we have a phase on the bottom, there's a wetland in between, and we're getting, we're finalizing our approvals to do directional boring underneath the wetlands. The, the interconnection here, and by the way, that also has to follow N E C, National Electric Codes as well. And so right here as well, we're going to, we're going to be going underground. Now, the code for underground, and it would be underground and conduit, first off, it's not direct burial. And, and that underground code is thirty-one inches. So I have to, so it's thirty-one inches down, it can't be anything less, it should not be anything more. It has to have the, there's going to be two, maybe three conduits in it, and the reason why we do that, when we do, when we do the burial of the conduit, we have one with our conductor going through that is going to be connecting to the transformers and out to, and out to the pole on Arcadia. But we will also have one or two other conduits in there with little strings in it, just in case anything happens. So you just go down there and, and, you know, dig everything up, you just run another conduit in there, just in case. So there's, there's, there's requirements to, for redundancy reasons as well.
Okay. Ms. Epps, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You have twelve inverters and then two transformers, right?
That's correct. Oh, so now, please, that, so again, eight, yes, twelve.
So yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not familiar with how that boring process will happen. So essentially, you're going to connect the top portion downward to the bottom portion of the board, right?
So, so this here, this, this section, this, I'm going to, I'm going to call these field segments, and I think that's the best way to go about it. So Field Segment A here is going to connect through Field, to Field Segment B through an underground, an underground cable, and most, and most of the cables, by the way, throughout the entire park, solar park, are underground. So there's no poles inside the park or anything of that nature. So we're going to, we'll be connecting that there, and by the way, this is a, this is an established crossing, so I don't, there's no real requirements that I have to be making sure that RIDE understands that is an established crossing. And they'll come out and they will bear up. There's no events or bugs about that. Morden and his team are very effective in that respect. And so the next step right here is that we identify this area as the area that will connect the other two, the other two portions. Now, clearly, I haven't finished, we have not finished all the geotechnical investigation of the site. Now, we know for, we know just because we can tell there's an outcrop of that here. And so I don't know whether or not I'm going to, whether or not it will be here or it will be at some other point, but there will be a directional boring, not unlike what they use on the underneath highways and so on, directional boring with conduit to be able to pull the connection between.
How deep does that conduit get, get there? It's not thirty-one inches?
No, I don't know. Alan, do you know?
No.
Alan, you know?
Certainly less than ten feet.
So, so Alan is saying less, usually less than ten feet. But it has to be enough to, I'm sure, get under the wetlands and make sure it doesn't disturb the wetlands in any shape or form.
And can you just explain on the access points again? I think on the TEF property at the top, I think you're going to use the existing drive for that property?
That's correct.
On the Gordon?
There's, there is an existing road, there's an existing drive right here at the edge of the property. Now, we have some, we have some abutters right here that we, especially an abutter that is right up against that drive. I want to be very sensitive to that, and I want to make sure that that abutter has an easement capability to be able to, to use that drive.
He's been using it a long time.
Yes, he has. And that's number one. So I might move it up, I might move it up a bit, but we'll make sure that that abutter has an easement to, so that he can access his property. And I believe that he wanted to put a new garage and so on and so forth, and so if he puts a garage back in his property, the easement can go through. I mean, that's not, that's not a issue.
Again, just going back to that boring process, is it, is it like, is it just like with a cable, I guess?
Well, it's conduit, it's, 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 I would say Schedule Forty, Schedule Forty, BBC conduit or something of that nature. Clearly, Mr. President, I'll be, I'll be very happy to give you the details on that. I have literally, I, I find myself to be only, I'm not able to answer you because this is, doing it in West Greenwich is the first time I've done it. And so I want to make sure that I give you the right, the right information, but I do know it has, that it is approved, approved as long as we're following the requirements of RIDE and the requirements of the National Electric Code. But I can give you the details.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah, this is something we've never been exposed to. Okay. I guess that's it for me, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cherry? Just asking, what's the acreage up into those A D C?
Yeah, Ms. Epps, you want to delve into the...
The tour, if you'd like.
Sure.
My name is Jamie Donnelly.
Alan? I'm going to need you on this, if you don't mind, Mr. Donnelly.
I think you went over that.
I think he did.
Yeah, that's what he did, and he has the acreage.
No, I meant the acreage of the actual fields, the solar fields.
Yes, I understand, I understand what you're asking.
That's the one I'm writing off. Okay, let's see. Okay, the Gordon property, the parcel size, again, seventy-six acres, and the fenced area after closed is nineteen-point-two acres.
So when you say the fenced area, that's nineteen, you would be cutting the field on it out of the seven.
That's correct. And on Skunk Hill? Give me one second. The total area, again, is ninety-eight acres. The fenced area is forty-two acres.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll take five minutes break, I can go to my headquarters as well.
Five questions.
I'll open up the pictures.
Yeah, pictures, yeah.
Five minutes, thank you. I apologize, I probably shouldn't have taken that break at that point in time, considering that I plan on including the meeting and most likely continuing the hearing at ten P M. So I apologize if folks have agreed to speak, you all get your chance to speak, just like in past hearings prior solar projects. I just should have mentioned that at the beginning on the side of the desk. Yes, please.
Okay, I have a few more housekeeping matters. I've given the clerk a copy of the document that you have in a binder, that Mr. Epps referred to as testimony as an exhibit. And I've also handed a copy of a intent to cut tree cutting contract. It is in reference to the TEF property. It is, the property was purchased from Mr. Teft, John Teft, about a year ago, but a year plus prior, I think it was April thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. He had signed a contract to cut the trees on his property with his son, who was in the business of logging. That contract is a condition upon which the E D P purchased, in other words, it's part of the conditions they have to meet if Mr. Teft intends on going forward with that cutting contract. That's still an issue up in the air, but if, if this doesn't work out and it goes back to a residential use, that E D P would then decide to build houses, then I expect that the, that the intent to cut the contract, that is authorized by D E N, by the way, there's a certificate that's been signed by D E N, giving him the permission to do that, that's attached to the document I've given clerk. He would probably exercise the rights. Next, I have a petition that I'm going to present tomorrow to your clerk of three hundred and twenty-six signatures with names and addresses of residents in the town of Hottington. It's presented by the Citizens Alliance for Tax Stabilization, who consider themselves proponents of this project, specifically as it relates to tax stabilization and having this project go quite a ways in stabilizing what otherwise, in a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of municipalities, is done by typical commercial big box projects. This council and predecessor councils have made a decision not to allow that in this town. I respect that. I understand the reasons why you would do that. But this will provide none of the bad parts of big box and only the good parts, which is fairly large property tax bills that will be paid automatically, collected much more easily. So I want to make a few closing arguments. I will actually, I'm just summarizing now, I will, there's going to be a presentation by Mr. Donnelly, there'll be other folks, and I'll have an opportunity on that day or another, either third day, maybe. But you've made decisions, tough decisions in reference to this town, as to what you want it to be. You've decided against big box, you've decided you want it to be rural, you want it to be farming, and you want it to be low taxes. If R F R is, without this zone change stage, it will allow a residential development on the TEF property as well as the Gordon property. And from my understanding from real estate experts in the town of Hottington, the TEF property is the best piece of property for a residential development site. So it will be, and it is valuable to one who wishes to do that. Farming, farming goes away when you have a residential development. It also is not permanent, you still have farmland, it'll be there twenty-five years. And lower taxes, you're staring at a leave of three or three-plus percent tax increase. So this proposal meets all of your needs, keeps it rural, keeps it farming, keeps it low taxes. it farming, keeps it low taxes. And it allows you to land down the land for 25 years. It allows you to raise $120,000 of real tax money this next coming year as a new revenue source. Any other thing that the company can do to help you folks with specific projects? We're going to be a good neighbor. We are your neighbor. We own the property. It'll be screened so that no one can see it. Can't be rural if you've got panels next to you that you can see it. You won't be able to see it. You won't be able to hear it. It'll be invisible for the most part. And that is specific both to Skunk Hill Road and Arcadia Road. I believe that it meets those needs that this council has to wrestle with. Before, when we would have been here in mid-January, you were in the beginning of your budget process. I've been there. I've sat in those chairs in North Kingston. And now you're in the middle of the process. You kind of know what the problem is. You're waiting for the state to give you budget numbers, so they're going to tell you how much money they're going to give you in aid to cities, towns, and aid to schools. It's a hard place to be. This project helps you with that difficult decision, so you don't have to pass those expenses on to the citizens that oversaw all the citizens that you live next to. Because it might be a great time for some people in some part of the state, or it might be a great time for all the people in other states. There's still people that are suffering, trying to hang on to tracts of the land, being land-rich and cash poor.
Thank you. Bob, I just had a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I had one for Ms. Stabs. Frank?
I just wanted to know the relationship between the Hopington Land LLC and Energy Development Partners?
Hopington Land, Hopington Land One LLC is a, I want to call it a subsidiary to Energy Development Partners. So it is, it's a holding company.
It's a holding?
It's a holding company, yes.
And the Hopington is the holding?
Yes. So Hopington Land was formed, the Hopington Land LLC was formed specifically to own the property. And it is a affiliate, I think is the correct legal term, of Energy Development Partners.
And you said something about you have signatures from the Citizens Alliance of what?
Tax stabilization. For tax stabilization. I'll present it to the clerk tomorrow. It's 326.
I just had a question for Frank. During the break, a director of butter had some real concerns, I guess, about viewing, obviously viewing the panels from her deck. But one important question she asked, which didn't get asked already, is what's the, assuming if the project did go forward, what's the timeframe for construction on the Teft and or wood? In rough terms, I guess, especially.
Construction would happen in 2020. And it would take from the, and we would not start during the winter months. So it would be in the, a year from now. And I would say that on the Teft land, and on the top of our Teft land to the bottom, it would be in the area between six and nine months of total construction time, I think, for the entire project itself. I mean, right now, we're doing a project that is bigger than this, and we are starting actually next week. And our commercial operating date for the project is December of this year.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. So council, I think we have questions for the others at this point in time? I assume we want to continue the hearing because we've got a lot of material to talk and we have not, which we do. Someone want to make a motion?
Okay.
Motion being sent in for the common folks. Have they heard that? All those in there? So I guess, Lisa, why not?
I'm assuming you might want to have the elementary schools for this terrible solar parade again.
Yes.
I reached out to school today and found that there were a couple of conferences that, April 29th, there's a conference, so you cannot have your meeting here, nor would you on May 6th or 2/3, but other Mondays going forward, you're not available.
Why are we going so late? We can't do it sooner?
Those are the ones that are not available.
I'm just telling you, we're giving a conference.
Oh, oh.
We have a regular time council meeting on Monday first at the time. We're avoiding Monday the 8th because the next day is a budget referendum. On the 15th, we are here for another solar project. After that, we have a couple of other Mondays in April, so I think 29th is not good.
22nd?
Maybe not everybody's available on the 22nd. That would be up to the time.
I'm here on the 2nd.
The day after is?
Trying to get a feeling for everybody, because I know there are things where they may not be able to make it.
All right, who can't make it?
The 22nd, right there. 22nd.
4/22. Ms. Stabs, can I make that quick? Let's set a date, folks. Come on. 4/22 or 5/13? All right, let's do 4/22. 7 P. S. 4/22.
Are you guys there?
They're going to be here?
Yeah, it'll be here. Yeah, we're here.